She scratched that car up. Every car I've had busted it out since I owned these.
There's a lot to be said about that.
Yep.
Good evening, welcome to the Rayner City Council meeting Tuesday, May 2nd, 6:00 PM. Would you please join me with the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to its republic which stands on my mission under its authority. Roll call is Bergman?
Here.
Nichols?
Osborne?
Here.
Siebel?
Here.
Smack?
Here.
I have a motion for approval of the May 2nd, 2023 agenda.
A move second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Number five tonight is public discussion. If you would like to speak to the council, please come up to the microphone, state your name and your address.
Everybody. Tom Nichols?
Tom Nichols.
Tom Nichols, yeah, good.
I just wanted you guys to know, if you have not been down to Baldimons, I would highly encourage you to go down there and take a look. This group in a very relatively short amount of time, it's done a lot. Inside concessions have all been repainted, floors have been done, bathrooms painted, boards done. The fields have all been worked as much as they can for right now until fall, then they'll get into a major reworking of them. But the place looks sharp, it looks nice. It looks cleaned up and I think you guys would be proud to see the difference in what it looks like from before to now. So they've done a lot of work, I encourage you to go down and take a look and learn from there, so. Also, just a little update on our sewer project down campground, they have, today they hide your seed. So tomorrow we start walking the blocks, hopefully we'll get some grass and we can get this spot open by Memorial Day, so. You get a chance to go down there and take a look at that and start looking pretty sharp. Alright, thank you.
Thanks, Tom. Anyone else would like to speak during public discussion? Okay. We'll keep moving on then.
One other thing for the Baldimons I forgot to mention, like last year we figured out they had 400, roughly 460 kids. We're pretty close to 700 this year. Well, 673 or something like that kids signed up this year, so. It looks like the community is backing them up and they've gotten a lot of grants, they like two or three different grants, gaming grant. DGM grants. And now they're going after a Moscow lighting grant to replace the lights out in one field, so need a lot of the community help behind them too.
That's awesome, great news. Number six is approval of the consent agenda, I have a motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Number seven, approval of the resolution calendar, all items listed under the resolution calendar will be enacted by one vote. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless the request is made prior to the time council votes on the motion.
Mayor, I would make an approval, but I had a question on one of the bills, I could need clarification.
Okay.
Do you want me to speak now, or wait?
Yeah, that's fine.
On the bill, it's nothing big, but I noticed under police cars, number 19 had two oil changes for two different prices. I didn't quite understand why we would have two of the same car, looks like they all got oil changes, which is fine, but is that a car number or?
No, it is absolutely not, actually the bill was, the first oil change was in February. And the second oil change was the end of April, so. Yeah, we hadn't received the bill in order. I'll take a second, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Alright.
Number eight is request for mayor to approve the final quote with aspiral for Yarway Center pad MI 97,100. That has been suggested and actually approved verbally by council and in advance.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Request to issue payment to Snyder Ford for 2023 Ford F-150 in the amount of $58,877.96. I don't think any of us were anticipating getting it this soon, it was more scheduled for the 1st of July. And obviously you saw the budget amendment, we had to add that back in because it's not much at this year either. And we have it.
Are you having that letter, Mike?
That's something I want to talk with the mayor about. The vehicle that we're getting rid of is not marked and there has been some discussion about not marking it, but that hasn't been decided yet.
It was pretty sharp when we might have done.
Yeah, they accidentally delivered it to City Hall, so I got to actually drive it. That is a weird experience, I even got to sit in the back in the caged area.
Ooh, that one.
Very weird experience.
Is that you out here?
I'm saying pictures are gonna happen.
Yeah.
Yeah. I will take a motion to approve.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We have several ordinances here to amend and we'll just go through each one individually. First one, ordinance 688 amending Park and Recreation Board compensation in its first reading was discussed last week. Due to several of the park board members that are actively involved. I mean, they're there down at the campground, they're at the Baldimons, they're actively involved in several of the things that are going on in the parks division in our city. I'm saying they've been underpaid, we actually, the last time we increased their pay from $10 to $20 a month was in 2012. So, 11 years ago.
I don't have a big problem, Mayor, but I wish it were to come up with budget time and I understand what Tom said last week. It's not tremendous amount of money, but. I was wondering what the board thought about the full 50 or split it between the 20 and the 50 or consensus of the council was.
My understanding of it is even if we increase this, it still has to come out of their existing budget.
Yeah.
So they have to make concessions somewhere.
Yeah.
So that's how I understood it was, even though it was an increase, if it passes through, we're not increasing the budget at all.
Right, and then again, this doesn't have taken effect until January 1st of 2024. Because an elected official cannot have an increase before the next election cycle, so, you know. Like Tom says, hopefully, you know, everybody is elected back in that wants to be a part of it.
I haven't decided yet.
Okay.
Just tell him Steve, $50 says he has.
That's right.
If you go 50 bucks, I might consider even more.
I'm not gonna say anything. I would, I would, I expressed my concern, not a disappointment, but I would approve the first reading of the $50 starting in January 2024. I understand the backdrop, what's went on, but I think it's a well worth program. $20 read isn't much money, I can say that about other board. I don't have a problem, I'd make a motion to amend it for the first reading.
I'll second you.
Roll call, please. Nichols?
Yes.
Osborne? Siebel?
Yes.
Smack?
Yes.
Bergman?
Yes.
Excellent. Number 11, ordinance 689 amending mayor compensation in its first reading, I just threw that on there because this again does not take effect until January 2024. Doesn't necessarily mean it's made, could be any of you folks, and that was budget expense.
Mayor, I have one question, I'm not against the increase, but I'd like to have a resolution to stay for one year. And then next year, council or whoever can look at it for the next year for an increase rather than like repaying 3% for the following year. I have no problem with the January 24th, but I'd like to see this read done just to show them one year. There are past resolutions that have come out, if anybody wanted to see them, we've, the city's done it both ways. We've had singular years and we've had double years, I'd like to just see it stay at a single year term, nothing against the.
No, and the reason it's done that way is it can't be done again until 2025.
Next election.
Next election.
Can't be increased, we wouldn't be able to set it otherwise.
Yeah, so to take effect in 2026 then.
Well, I guess the only struggle I have is it's not the pay, but it's that you were preloading money and we don't even know what's went on this year. Is the mayor gonna say, well, that's not really right, that 3%, you talked about that a year and a half ago, two years ago.
Right.
They want to have more, can we get into a financial deal, okay, where are we gonna take the beer to PayPal? That's the only reason to bring it up, I think it's a valid point, but if you're saying now that it couldn't be looked at next year for the following year, that's what you're telling me?
That's correct.
What's this for that we're gonna look at next year?
Well, you can only, you can only do ordinance to change elected, right, you can, you can only change for elected officials. You can only change the pay.
For the.
For the year of the city election, so it's a two-year term, so you would, now, I wouldn't even see this increase come July 1st, you know that, right?
Right.
It wouldn't be increased, you know, that's if I wanted to run and I was elected, so whoever was elected for this position. So it wouldn't take effect until January of 24. And then if you didn't want to do the other 3%, which would be July of 24, you couldn't even look at it again until, you know, summer or whatever. Spring or fall, whatever, you can't do it in the fall, it has to be approved by the election of 2025. And then it wouldn't take effect until January 26th, so that's the only reason I did it that way, you know. This position hasn't had an increase either since 2022, so.
Neither has the council.
I, if you guys want something on the agenda, then I don't have a problem with it, no one has mentioned it to me or.
Just put up the $500, then it won't be late.
Yeah.
Mayor, I have a question, when you're putting that logic, you're saying, why back on past ordinances that I've got a bunch of them here from the last few years? There's been times where it's been one-year increase, it hasn't been the dual year, why, I'm hearing now that we can't do it one year, that's my thinking.
Well, the last ordinance we passed was just a one-year, or was just a one-term. And that was passed in September of '21, and that didn't take effect until January 22. And then it won't, that person, myself, will not see another increase or whoever is in this position until 2024.
Let me ask you this question, if it's not in the resolution, and I fully understand what you're saying, why couldn't it be taken out of there? And then next year, you're doing a great job, you got the 3% from January on, the council could look at a raise. We've done the other thing to break them.
We can't do an ordinance if it's not an election year. That's what I'm saying, you cannot do another ordinance again until 2025, because it's done by ordinance, not resolution.
That's my only concern, that we're preloading money for another year, we don't do that for anybody else, including the council. And that's, that's my frustration with that verbiage and that, I understand what you're saying, but. I don't know what the rest of the council thinks, but I guess that's a rule of mine.
So you can't change your wage at all, let's say they're just, you know, like the city's having a stellar year and we want to give you more than 3%, you can't get more than 3%? You can't even do a resolution there?
I think that's covered under state law.
Yeah, it is.
And so you can't get in office and basically say, I'm gonna pay myself 20%, let's go for it.
Yeah.
And then not realize somebody else who could have ran because the pay wasn't, it just did that whole, anytime it deals with money.
Yeah, and that's a good thing, I mean, I just haven't seen it where you just like, okay, hey, you know, like you get 3% this year and you definitely get 3% next year. Before we even know how you're performing it, I mean, I've had that talk with you before, it's like, how do we know how that person's gonna be performing? I mean, you could be overperforming and you should get more.
But we're all elected officials, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
We're, I mean, there's no like performing, like, I'm not saying Ron, Ron, you're not performing the way I thought. He's elected, right, he's elected by people.
Yeah, and I.
There's no performance here, you're saying.
I know that, but if you're not doing what you're supposed to be doing, you can be voted out, and so can Ron, and so can I, and so can I.
But, yeah.
But that's, that's the way it works.
If you go through the proper channels through the state.
Yeah.
The council can't go do it all, I mean, that's a problem.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
We can't get rid of you.
No.
We can't get rid of you.
Ron, there is a process, he told me that when I went to give him his oath. I didn't know how I should take that at that day, but I still smiled and worked it over. Okay, well, I will take a motion to pass ordinance 689 in its first reading.
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
And that's with the 3%, sorry, that's what I was just looking over, as stated with the 3% again.
Yeah.
So I'll second it.
So my thing is, I think the economy is gonna keep going the way it is coming up, otherwise I wouldn't leave.
Everything I deal with every day is showing me absolutely no difference, so, yeah, and it's still climbing, it's slow, but it's still climbing.
I always thought it was the last.
Roll call, please. Osborne?
Yes.
Siebel?
Yes.
Bergman?
Yes.
Smack?
Yes.
Nichols?
No.
I have one question, Mayor.
Yes.
What's the procedure protocol for councilmen, does it come to the mayor when you want a resolution, you put on the calendar with a pencil? And I'm feeling it should be all the way around, we get everybody that's paid for it.
Uh, ordinance?
Yes.
Absolutely.
So I'd.
I mean, if you want to make a recommendation tonight, or if you want to just give me a call, that's fine.
I think it's only right, we did the whole city, we went against contracts, we went with contracts. I think it's only fair to put the council spot in the same position this year, and as we go forward, we say that we have, people, people stuff went on for everybody in that year.
Okay, give me a call. Number 12, ordinance 690 amending speed regulations in its first reading, just a little conversations and I'm sure Justin will speak to this. I would like to approve it in its first reading with deleting McCoy Road out of there. Because we have some uncertainty about who owns what, there was some kind of court order back in 1950s.
54. It was a documentary.
It was 54, yeah. So we're still waiting here back on that, and Justin, do you want to speak on that?
Yeah, so I mean, just a couple pieces, as I talked with the mayor, got more information, not only from the legal side of who owns what half and if Alfront's got. But I also just had some concerns, again, my greatest thing with any of these roads is we've, the speed limits. Obviously, it's for traffic flow and anything, it's really just the age of the road, the condition of the road, the width of the road. But then the ability to at least give pedestrians a way to get off the road, McCoy does not have that all the way through. So right away, I was concerned that just, whether they use it or not, we've given them the ability to walk on a sidewalk and get out of traffic's way. Since that's not there, I, right up front, was not in favor of McCoy out of these three, so that was my other background.
Any other discussion? Any other concerns with, it was West Gilbert from, which is 30 all the way through until you get Ver, oh, through East Town Coin. The other one was Grand, I didn't know, I mean, we had talked about all these, but.
My only concern, I'm not against it, I just am not sold on it with Grand, is just that is our funneling piece of all the kids going to school. Not great, it's been a four-way stop, there are sidewalks, there are rest, but we do increase foot traffic during the beginning and then especially after school headed down that direction. Luckily, there are sidewalks, again, that's only if they get used, but that was my only, just, I was kind of on the fence with Grand. West Gilbert, I didn't have any major red flags pop up, again, that is simply mine, I'm honestly good either way on that one. So I just wanted the other opinions of any other information you had come out. I did also check in chief dean, I did talk with the mayor just to get your input, she was able to ask to, you had kind of looked at these and had no great concerns with Grand.
No, but I think what you're saying is a fair assessment.
So, yeah, so I did want, again, public safety, I don't mind the speed limit increases as long as it's reasonable, you know, I. I personally feel that our law enforcement here is to make our community better, keep us safe, not to necessarily be a revenue generating entity for the city. So just writing speed tickets for the sake of writing speed tickets is not, I feel, the right direction for them. So if we can help unburden some of that additional by still being safe, I have no problem with it. But again, just simply looking around to make sure, that was the only thing I had, was just that, two times a day as we kind of funnel kids down, ran too central. It does get empty utilized, you know, for that purpose, but again, I was on the fence, so I'm not hard against it by any means.
Any other thoughts, council?
So the police chief doesn't have any issue with it being 30, I Grand and Central is the only one.
I know, like I said, I think Councilman Smack gives a fair assessment with that, I certainly think that's reasonable to consider. I think that as we've done this with Evans, I think a lot of the, the review from a lot of people was that they found that. I think a lot of people felt that the 30 mile an hour versus 25 was a more easily maintained speed to some degree. And I don't necessarily disagree with that.
Always try it, if it don't work out, it'll be, I think it's a safety issue, we can always change it. We want to maybe get a lateral everything in there.
And we've had officers at the last meeting, I know you requested Evans Monster sit down from your house, you know, in the later hours of the evening, and we did that. And we did not find any excessive amounts of speeding with where the speed limit is now.
They're watching council, I know it's coming.
I'll take a video and bring it out to you.
I don't, I don't know about the rest of you, but since they've increased the speed limit on Evans, it is so easy. It's easy to do 29 or 30, it really is. I mean, 25 for me was always a struggle, I had to semi cruise, that's just the bottom line, but it just seems.
Most people speed on Grand anyways, so that five miles isn't gonna make a difference, really. I mean, if you really sat there, people, I mean, our living room is right there, so we hear. You know, not everybody, but.
Likewise, West Gilbert.
Yeah, I would say five out of 10 cars are going above 25.
A business on Route 4 for their truck speeding by.
Now, I will admit, when you're sitting in a marked squad car, it's a little harder to find speeders.
We'll have it unmarked when I'm here.
Yeah.
Typically, when people see the marked car, the front end of the car dips down quick.
Yeah, I mean, Tommy used to mark his squad car in their driveway, like on the gravel, just his car parked there, people drove slower, but yeah.
Well, I would take a motion to approve the first reading as amended by removing McCoy.
So move.
Second.
Roll call, please. Smack?
Yes.
Nichols? Osborne?
Yes.
Bergman?
Yes.
Siebel?
Yes.
Order 691, item 13 is amending fireworks first reading, just some clarification is, just kind of come in the middle because. I heard what everybody was saying and I heard what Christie was saying too, you know, if our only night off is on the 3rd, which is five times. And we only get two, then we're off both, actually it's six, because then it would be a Sunday. I'm just seeing how many days it does actually fall on, so I like having the 3rd in there included. We did remove the 5th of July, and we did also keep in the December 31st, because that's not seeming to be a real issue, because.
Why do we keep that in there?
Well, they put it to it.
They're gonna do it then.
But they're not gonna do it as much for, you know.
Well, I hope I can get the police chief to sit in my neighborhood at the fairer time, I mean, because I swear to God, there's a professional putting the show on.
That's true.
So I, I, I would favor going to two days, but the way it risen with that, that's just too much, way too much. I got a couple of New Yorkers, they go crazy.
It's kind of funny, this was actually brought up, I had a resident come in my office today. And he's like, well, while you're amending this ordinance, why don't you put a provision for waste in there? Because it's bad enough that you have to deal with, and he, sounds like he is a professional in his neighborhood as well. But then you're picking up all the trash for days.
Yep, you are, that's not a problem.
And I don't, you know, I'd have to do some more research on that to see, chief, you need.
I don't disagree with that, and just so I'm clear, because Councilman Siebel thinks I feel otherwise, but if I, if it were up to me, I would get rid of fireworks altogether. I don't care for them, but.
That's my first intention.
Yeah, I don't care for them, my daughter absolutely don't, she freaks out with the fireworks. So I would get rid of them if I could, but I understand people want, you know, the freedom to be able to do that. Trying to find that happy medium is the, is the goal.
Well, if we're taking the day off, we're kind of crunching it a little bit, we're not just going status quo.
And would you, if, would you believe as far as the waste parameters, I mean, is that a citation that would be through your office? And how would you believe that?
Yeah, I guess I'd have to do some research on that, I don't know. I mean, you certainly would like to think that people would clean up after themselves, but that does not always happen.
I've been cleaning up trash for the last two days because some of these garbage cans flew over and, you know, they love their stuff. I'm not gonna run after my stuff either, except if you didn't, it's fun to be.
That might be a question for, you know, city attorney, if we were gonna be willing to cite people for not cleaning up their fireworks litter.
Yeah, I think, you know, the burden of proof, I think that would probably be, yeah, I agree.
I mean, if you have somebody who's clearly just leaving a lot of the leftover stuff at the end of their driveway, that's probably different, but.
Yeah, and how big of an issue is it when it's just two days, you know?
Well, maybe this will help.
I was just gonna say that, you can shoot a lot up in an hour.
One night.
But it's also expensive, so like.
That's what I haven't understood, there's some people spend some major, major cash.
If you want to see a good show, come over my back here, 4th of July.
Is that a formal end line?
Yes.
How much do you spend, how much do you spend?
I don't touch fireworks.
So, ordinance 691, we're gonna have a motion to approve the first reading.
To amend it to the 3rd and 4th only.
That is correct.
From the hour.
Is it, are you saying take out December 31st then?
I'd like to see it out, but it's a council vote.
Because right now it just says reading, it just says it reads, the 3rd, the 4th, and the 31st of December. Again, I'll repeat, we don't have. Again, I'll repeat, we don't have a lot of fireworks going off on the thirty-first of December. Maybe only at your place. At your place?
There was something flushed, you may not.
I had, I, I've got a great group in my neighborhood, I mean, uh, they, they participate heavily. I can take you to the houses too, Mike, you don't even have to go look for them.
Yeah, that's true.
Leave that in there. Okay. Is that your second, council member? Roll call, please.
Bergman?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Smack?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Siebel?
Yes.
Um, and you know, in front of you, um, I did have an opportunity to reach out to Maggie since our last meeting regarding Lafayette Road, um, reconstruction project. Um, those are a couple of figures, that's kind of based on the rural footprint. But I just kind of want to get your idea, what we did is we separated out, um, there's about a third of that roadway that is in the northwest, Tiff District, and then the rest of it, of course, would be, uh, road use and would be paid by loss funds. So, I mean, it, with using that Tiff, and then it's a ten-year and a twelve-year, um, I, you know, just like, I'd love to hear your ideas on, on what you would like to do and how you would like to move forward.
More grants.
Like, I, we did not get the, um, we did not get the Ashley Vincent grant, which I stated at the last meeting. I'm still looking, and, you know, hopefully, you know, with these infrastructure dollars that they keep saying that are out there, you know, there would be something that would be, you know, kind of be more available, but so far, I haven't.
The main thing, my question was, is how deep is the sewer around there?
Chris, can you speak to that?
It's big, it's very deep, very deep, like fourteen feet, it's super deep right there.
But you can cut the road down a couple of foot and it wouldn't bother?
Wouldn't bother, but.
So is that what you're thinking, like, cut it down into the rural foot- footprint?
No, that's my idea, I would get it down lower than what it is, because it's, like I said, it's, well, then there's a whole country road.
Yeah, and, and do, and like Chris said, and I don't know if you want him to explain subdrain, but it really helps in taking the water away from the roadway.
I'm for an overlay of blacktop myself. I think the, the cost on the project, from what I've seen today, we have to be responsible for tax dollars, and whether they come, whatever revenue stream they come from. I've looked over some of those numbers on the estimates that we got last time, there's a lot of variable in there, uh, to make a very decisive, which you go for, but my, my thought would be to do what they said and do an overlay of blacktop. Why into twelve-foot blacktop?
Let's say do what they say.
The, well, the engineer, the things we got last time, we had three bids.
That was not their recommendation, though.
No, that wasn't, no, that's not it, I'm just saying it's mine.
Okay, all right, I just want to make sure in case I misunderstood something.
I mean, he, he's gonna say what he wants, I mean, he gets paid in terms of what he settles.
Well, he's, he's a third party.
Right, but still.
He's not the engineer on the project.
And then I'd also like to be in the agreement to get into this, uh, I'd like to know how much we spent on engineering fees to date from back, I read papers from Doug when he was in here when we started this years ago, you were here too as a clerk.
Two hundred and thirty thousand.
Total?
Yeah.
And when are we paying for having them messing around with plans now?
Well, we, we, they haven't started yet. They haven't started messing around with the plans yet. That was on the, the council for approval in March, it was what, fifty-three or fifty-five? It was fifty-three or fifty-five.
Thousand.
Right.
More.
Yeah. To bring it up to DOT specifications, so.
And that's just my figure, that's what I want to see, then, that if you spent, what I, from the last meeting, what I've seen, we spent two point two million, and we got ten, fifteen years of service out of it. And we had to redo it, it'd be better than getting six or seven million, go on another route. That's just my own one vote, and that's how I feel, I've had a lot of people down there tell me that, some have told me the other. I'm just looking at, like I've always said, I'm looking at dollar spending in the city for what it costs, and I don't think that's a bad thing for the state to have it done that way. And it's my vote, can I, or when we do a round of votes or whatever, that's what I would go for.
Well, in, in, I want everybody's opinion here, because we're looking at four point eight million compared to two point six million for an overlay. Um, it would not come out in property taxes, because it's gonna be coming out of Tiff and road use, which is not property taxes, so.
And still.
We got no, that means the Tiff area?
Yes, absolutely, yes. Yes.
Can I ask you one thing, what do they say the life expectancy of the overlay is compared to doing the road?
Well, they're, they're saying five to ten years.
Five to ten years.
And, and it's not, uh, just any overlay, it's not overlaying Evans, okay? Evans has held up quite well, but this isn't that roadway, this is an eighty-two-year-old road that was done with riverstone, so as the primary mixture in that concrete. So you can see everywhere we've repaired on that road, and it's gonna do it again. So I'm, I'm just saying, I think this is a better bang for your buck. You want to spend two point six million and start repairing it in five to seven years? And then start spending money again on it? Or do you want to do it right to begin with, get that eighty-two-year-old road out of there and move forward? I mean, I, I, I just think it's a no-brainer.
The way I understood the numbers off of it were, yes, then you could expect to, within a couple of years, maybe, you're gonna see all those cracks come through. So we're gonna start patching within just a couple of years.
We got all your equipment repaired too, because we're gonna be hitting it with the plows.
Yep. Then, five to ten years was a modest nature, so let's say, yeah, well, you can do it ten to fifteen, just to kind of for numbers, for the life of that before we're looking at resurfacing, versus basically double the money. I mean, this was just the math I ran through, so double the money, I should at least get twenty to thirty years out of it, and again, these are all just estimates. But he was speaking when the engineers were here, saying that the full concrete, either one of the full-depth concrete options we were looking at were more like a thirty-year road before we would even have to start potentially looking at any major patches or repairs. And that was just the patching and repair. So in thirty years, very little touching, and then again, should last longer. So to me, we were half the minimum of at least doubling our money, potentially getting more use out of it. The other piece I was looking at for this was also addressing the, the water, the retention issues, the flooding issues, the backup and everything that has kind of plagued that area. So at the same time, if we can, may not fix it a hundred percent, but at least we're doing something to help work that direction, whether it's just the, uh, subdrain or it's the full curb and gutter. But I also kind of took that as two problems that we would potentially be solving as a new road, but then also help with irrigation. And then, yes, I, I absolutely get it, I was not planning on a five-million-dollar road, but, you know, old-school construction is, do it right or do it twice. So it's like, okay, are we just gonna be looking to pay for it twice anyways? If we can get more life out of it potentially, and then also help with the fire issue.
Oh, we don't have an actual engineer's price to do the road today.
I know, I was not gonna throw that on you.
I don't know, when we're talking.
Until I had some.
When we're talking this twenty years, thirty years, seven years, I mean, I'd like to see, uh, today's price engineer, whether it be for what we talked about originally on an overlay, and whether it would be for the plan B, and see what the difference today is to do the road engineer-wise. Because apparently, these things we got last meeting were just kind of a knock on the door.
No, I bet, I did give you that proposed for the overlay, it was two point six million.
Right.
Yeah.
Then it's four and a half or five million and up.
Four point eight, yeah.
But we all know, we all know.
That includes, that includes engineering, the four point eight, and.
I understand that, right.
Go ahead, would you announce, uh, your next podium, state your name and your address, please?
Bailey Highway, Rio two North Roosevelt Road. Um, so with the overlay, how thick are we thinking?
The overlay is six inches.
Six inches?
Yeah.
So you're, yeah, you're looking at six, it's about an inch. One inch is about one year before the cracks are showing, you know? Um, I would recommend driving through Waterloo, they just got done redoing Ridgeway, and a couple of months, they are already seeing cracks, and it's about a three-inch overlay, right? So, again, I would look at long-term, which I know some of you guys are thinking, it would be more expensive, but do it right the first time, because ultimately, if you just continue overlaying, you're gonna be wasting money in the long run.
Well, thank you, Bailey, I appreciate your input.
I'm gonna go up there. I was gonna kind of say the, close to the same thing that he said, I mean, you gotta look at, what's your price today for doing it?
Two point six million for the overlay, four point.
For the overlay.
Rural.
In five years, if you gotta do the overlay again, what's it gonna cost you again? You gotta look at inflation and everything else, and things that five years ago were, heck, a lot cheaper than what they are today. I think you gotta look at that, too. You know, overall, how much are your costs gonna go up?
Right, yeah. It is, I, oh, I'm so sorry. Kelly?
I really appreciate the, Kelly Parker, Marion Street, I really appreciate the consideration the council is taking into the cost for this project. I personally support the four point eight million rural footprint, um, choice, I think we need to get rid of all that old concrete underneath. Citizens are gonna start complaining when it starts falling apart, they've waited many years for us to have the money to actually do this project, and for it not to, um, be a long-term fix. I think they're gonna be disappointed, the council's gonna be hearing about it, you're gonna, you're gonna wish that we had done it right the first time. I just want to give my two cents there.
Thank you, Ms. Parker.
Yeah.
I will add the next meeting, you know, of course, you can visit amongst yourself or whatever in the next two weeks. Um, just as long as there's not more than two of you visiting at the same time. So I say that, clarification. Um, and I will have the exact four, I'm assuming that you guys are looking at rural footprint, is that what you want total figures on?
I am fine with either of the final two options. The full thickness.
You have the final two options for me, too.
Right?
Yeah, I'm for turning it all on.
But with, with rural, right?
Not curbing gutter?
Not curbing gutter.
No, I want curbing gutter, I mean, the whole thing should be done and done properly. Seeing that the sidewalk is not right in the roadway, actually. Turn out to be a lot better program all the way, otherwise, you know, kids are gonna walk down the street, go, boy, they saw the bugger, and forgot. And you're actually on the roadway when you're walking. And, uh, I think the whole system, I think the road should be lowered, and that's right. If you're gonna do it, do it once, you do it right.
Well, I will bring, um, both footprints to the next meeting, and at that time, which means.
And I can assess the sidewalk, too.
Yeah.
Just somebody else.
You're just glad you know, though, there. And we were able to get this one point seven million dollar grant because we were gonna put in a sidewalk. So that was part of, that was part of the.
Yeah, that's called widening the road, the sidewalk, it's like it is now.
Yeah.
It's part of the roadway.
Yeah, well, this was gonna be a separate sidewalk. Yeah.
How does a curb and gutter, how does that sidewalk and curb and gutter work? As you go down whatever part of the road, you're gonna have a sidewalk on the side and a curb and gutter, how does that gonna be not safety, I don't understand it.
Well, all we need is a sidewalk on one side, so we got it anyplace in town.
So it'll be just flat from the road, be no curb or all the sidewalk attached?
You can see curb and gutter, so on the south side, per se.
Just like the Richmond sidewalks, I don't know, that's true, like, go in the street and then you get a sidewalk and it's back.
It's elevated, you have to go over the curb, too.
So we got a place to walk. All the curves down the road.
Okay, moving forward. Number fifteen, request to work with Shuttleworth and Ingersoll for the review of Mid-America's franchise agreement. Um, that was kind of blindside me a little bit, we just, uh, received, it's our renewal for the American Energy, our franchise agreement with them. It's a twenty-five-year agreement. Um, you would generally have your attorney review that just to make sure nothing's changed from the last twenty-five years to now. And we, we, um, you, they're actually gonna be here in our next meeting to visit with us on our franchise agreement. Um, and, you know, some of the options are what have you. Um, however, however that being said, our, um, current city attorney, there's a conflict, so they can't review. Review for us, I reached out to, um, well, I, I reached out actually to Mike Young, just thinking he might still be with, um, um, Dutton Law Firm, and he wasn't, he's actually moved on with Laura Fulkerson, uh, with Shuttleworth and Ingersoll. She stated, uh, the gal that Laura, um, partnered me with was, uh, she stated it would be, shouldn't exceed fifteen hundred for that review, because she figured it would probably take her about four hours.
What does that review tell us, do you know?
It, it's, it's an agreement we're gonna enter into for twenty-five years.
For them to do what, though, what do they do for the agreement?
Um, in Mid-America, um, the franchise agreement with them, is that they can use our city easement for the placement of, you know, utilities and all that.
And the last one, my understanding, was twenty-five years ago.
Twenty-five years ago, yeah.
So one or two things may change.
Yes.
In twenty-five years?
Yeah, I mean, I, I wouldn't feel comfortable bringing that to council and saying, let's approve this franchise agreement, without it being reviewed first. So. Motion to approve, please.
So move, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Number sixteen, council to consider amendment to have the stock code of ordinances regarding billboards, that is a very, very long document that was in your packet, eighteen pages to be exact, um, to update our ordinance to include, um, billboard in signage language. Right now, it just says nothing, it just says, you know, according to building code two thousand nine, so that.
Yeah, depends on how you wanna read it, I mean, I could read it.
I mean, did you read through that?
Yeah, I, I think, like, they put on an art, it said, no billboards at all are, are, are in the commercial area of the town.
Okay.
That, that's it.
Okay.
Someone's trying to enter run. Someone's residential. Not all commercial.
Yeah, but I submit that in the commercial area, and all, well.
It already states.
If it's out of the, uh, resident, the commercial area, it ain't as bad, because people like that sign, there's block on one side, one way, and coming the other way, it's like, yeah.
There, actually, our code specifically states that you can't have a billboard in residential. Our current code does, and it also states that it can't, um, be in the right of way, obviously, and it can't impair visibility on the, on the roadways, but it doesn't say you can't put one on your property. It does not specifically state that anywhere.
It depends on how you wanna read some of that, maybe, I mean, that's, you can take it different ways, read it.
Yeah.
And, uh, I know the intent of it was, I'm just, usually, no boards here, where there's building seven on the coast of the street, and all that, the street.
So you don't think that, the last time we did a codification, which probably was five years ago, you don't think that that was changed, do you?
I don't know. I got no ordinance, but.
Do you?
I can look at that.
Maybe look.
I don't know, but that's, I mean, that's.
Anyway, I, I don't know if it's something that you guys want to move forward with at this time. Um, it, it appears that if we want to update our zoning ordinance, that we're gonna actually have to hire someone to do that, that is professional. that is professional and does this for a living as far as zoning ordinances, so they can make recommendations to the city. Um, I, I, I haven't even reached out yet, um.
See, there's very little in there about billboards and the reason there is very little information about the law.
But it doesn't, it doesn't actually state that.
They'll come right out and say not allowed, but if you read it, then, of course, it was a long one. They've got to put it in.
It's confusing.
And it's been changed.
And that was where we've kind of been back and forth on for quite a while.
Yeah, we have.
And we never.
Yeah.
I have, as far as my memory says, when we asked for a legal definition of what we could or couldn't defend as the city, we got back a whole lot of, oh, so have we.
Well, it isn't.
With the new attorneys, was the new way to find what this reads as.
Yeah, the ordinance was good, but the way it was written, it gives you.
And that's ultimately, the ordinance is just text on paper. What it'll come down to is our legal representation being able to defend it. And if they can't defend it, the words aren't that great.
Well, we kept them out for fifty years.
So, yeah, and that's what I mean, is what, what understanding do we have now of this? I know previous city attorney, we didn't get a whole lot back. It was literally a, I don't know.
Cause I read it, and I, I read it, you can't, I don't know, that has to be attached to the building or pertaining to the businesses in front of. And that would eliminate billboards as far as advertising and if it's advertised places to in front of.
I'll, I'm gonna forward to some of the emails that I've had with the attorney. And, um, let you review his thoughts. This is our new, our, our new attorney. So.
No, I'm not an attorney, but I said, but vermin should not consider them forcing that keep it up or.
Yeah, and I'll look at that old, I'll look at the last code.
Cause that's why there's nothing in there on billboards, because we didn't allow. And as far as coming right out and saying that, I don't, I gotta go.
Did you look at the C two, C one, C two, and C three, where it talks about billboards in there?
Yeah, it says, most of what it says, it's gotta be in front of the building and pertaining to the business that's in the building that's in front of it.
Okay, yes. Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll correspond with you regarding that. Well, put it on the next agenda, do some more research. I know that it needs to be addressed before the next guy comes along.
Well, that would make it sore down.
And I know we can't do that.
What we're gonna have to, that looks like, oh, friends of property over there, that's in the city.
I know, but that, well, it is the property owner. It is the property owner that had it put out. Yeah. Yeah.
It's by getting paid for it there.
Yeah.
You know, it had no pertaining to the businesses in there.
Right, I get it.
Oh, it's.
It just doesn't specifically say that, though, so I'll communicate with you. Mayor Council reports. I just have a couple of things. Some good things happened in our city. One is the dog park. Um, all the posts are up, um, the pad is laid. They'll be finishing the fence actually this week. Um, we're working on signage and, you know, just kind of getting that moving. Um, everybody's been a great help. We've had to cut down some rotten trees in the bugger park. They were pretty old trees, but they were, they were definitely rotten to the core. Um, guys have been working really hard on that and just working to get this project going. Um, our yardway center, our current yardway center, please pass this along to all your friends, family, relatives. Share it on Facebook. Um, will be closing as of Thursday, May eleventh. Um, we are relocating our yardway center and we're in the process of doing so. We haven't almost ready, but we're kind of at the hands of ass problem in their time. We're gonna try to get, this should be a smooth transition. Again, please share this with your family, your friends, your neighbors, so they're all alert to this. We're also gonna be posting it on Facebook, on our website, um, and please, again, share that. And, uh, we will have signage, um, right there by the, the new entrance to the yardway center. Um, so hopefully deter any, uh, Holland, the part of Wood Roof Construction, they will be mobilizing next, at the end of next week, so they don't want any traffic after that point. Um, what else?
Should we also have a sign right at, uh?
We will.
Right at that entrance to Deerwood.
Okay.
You know, right on River Forest and Gilbert.
Yeah.
That way it deters people from even driving in.
What?
Well, well, we will, hopefully, it's gonna be a smooth transition of.
Sure.
One closes, one opens.
That's what I'm gonna ask. If we're gonna have a delay, we're gonna have a problem.
Yeah, yeah, so.
If, if there is gonna be a delay, yes.
Well, rather than have someone drive all the way back to where they think they wanna go, maybe turn around, turn, just stop in the intersection.
Okay, and I will actually put that on K W W L also, if it's gonna close for a day.
Yeah.
I'm hoping it kind of seamless and works as right crisp. We're hoping it's kind of seamless. Yeah, ribbon cutting. Oh, yeah, that, that, that's, glad you brought that up. The ribbon cutting for, um, CFCCU is gonna be on the sixteenth. So it'll actually be our next meeting night, uh, and it's gonna be that afternoon. I also, I sent you guys an, all, all email regarding that.
Where does it move to?
It's gonna move to just, so right now, when you veer off to go into the yardway center, our wastewater plant, it's gonna be just right there at the veer off.
Right after you pass the entrance, you all die, but now you're right.
Yeah. It's right to your right, like, we're gonna.
Down the building, wall backwards.
Yeah, don't confuse people. We'll have signings, we'll have putting a signing. Council?
I just have a couple of things, Mary. Uh, we, we get a rental contract with one city or two cities, three yardway center.
Yeah.
I think we're spending a hundred thousand dollars that are recorded, we wanna do. I think we need to look at changing that contract price up some for the ECs. I, I've seen a lot of people from Elfran that come and they're using the site and they're obviously there and able to do it. But I, I mean, I know, I know, I hear the city a good neighborhood, but it seems like we're always the neighbors to everybody. And I think we should really look at that this year and change that. And if I come to agree with the contract, was it twenty-four hundred now or twenty-two hundred?
Twenty-four hundred, yeah. And, you know, just like you said, I don't know, you know. One of the things you said about increasing the parking record compensation is it's, you know, we shouldn't have done this before it was budgeted. So all of them have their budgets confirmed and, and, um, sent to the state as well. I would definitely contact them in regards to an increase come July first. Cause this is not their fault, we're moving the yardway center.
No, but the.
I know, we talked about it too.
The overall expense, though, that our crew does for the flipping and the cleaning and the burning and the moving, plus what little bit they're giving us, is we're, we're losing out. We need to be a little bit more realistic to the cost of operation and the, the site that we're taking and the hundred thousand we're spending. I, and I think if you reach out, I, I don't see why Elfran, if they've talked about it, I think they should come to the council meeting. I think they should have an obligation to that too. And if they wanna go to Elfran and put one out there by the sewer plant, let them go ahead. If they wanna continue the contract with us, I think we need to revisit, revisit. It's only a fair thing to do.
Is it an annual contract?
It is.
July, right?
Fiscal year twenty-five. Yes, twenty-four starts July one.
Yeah.
Ten times, it's only ten times depressing.
Yeah. They, that we would address on, I think it's a two-year agreement anyway that we signed with them. So we wouldn't probably, we wouldn't address it until February twenty-five anyway. So that'd be something we actually address with them this fall, saying, you know, we're gonna be having an increase in our yardway's agreement, which I don't think it's been increased for quite some time, so.
And my second.
Definitely put it in our budget notes.
I appreciate it. And then I also wanna bring up about nuisance, dead tree. I'm getting a lot of feedback and the people that know the feedback, they know who they are. If we have an ordinance that says that dead diseased trees should come down, why doesn't it come down on personal property? We have an ordinance that says it can't be there. Why isn't it taken down either by the city in charge, the homeowner, or that they get a notice that they have to take those trees down? I'm talking Norma for one area, and I'm talking those trees down in Gilbert another.
Yeah, and that's a process too. It actually has to come to council.
Well, I'm bringing.
Council have to prove it. Why didn't you just call me? I would've put it on the agenda.
Sorry, I'll call you more often.
I mean, I was.
I'm trying to leave you alone. You're an oververbal one.
The, you know, I was waiting on some of these too, because not all trees are butted. Some of those trees out there.
Those are dead, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
They're dead.
Okay. I'll have that on the next agenda then.
Would you get with Steve too and down on Mary? I know he's probably down there. He told me, but, but there's a car back and can you walk with trailers with no plates? I know it doesn't run. It has to have plates, license, ready. And I know Jerry's brought to my attention about trailers, but we can't do them by trailers on property. But he needs to look, get that dealt with so that people see that we are doing things when there's ordinances to be done. I've been getting beat up terribly in the last month about we're not, we're not following up on things, we're not getting things done.
And I don't know where Steve is at, but I will follow him on Mary, cause I know he did send a letter out.
Uh, you give me a call or a text or something, let me know and update some of the citizens and everybody, or knocking. I have an answer.
With Steve, I know the new software, you know, they're working on stuff for it. That's my first question is kind of where that's at, so that this helps visibility and, and we don't.
So, um, unfortunately, um, the person we've been working with for months on the software is getting all, completely all of our stuff, et cetera, et cetera, up and quit. So now we have a new representative. So it's, it, you know, bear with us. There was at one point, cause they approved that like November last year, I think. At one point during budget and everything that was going on in the year and all that stuff, um, we said we needed to take a timeout. We did as a city. Um, and then we re, when did we start?
February.
February?
Yeah.
So February, we started, and we were on a really good roll and all that, and then we had a scheduled meeting, then we never heard back from him again. So then I had to make some additional phone calls to find out what was going on. So that's where we're at. Hopefully soon, because it's gonna be great.
Until the software's put up.
Mm-hmm.
Especially for, you know, Steve or anyone else to ask us, what kind of cadence can we get from Steve? What kind of cadence has he given you for updates on those properties? Cause I know what we're adding here.
Yeah.
He's been able to provide updates and stuff, but I know he's got them.
Yes.
Is there a monthly piece, whether it's a package, email, and.
Yeah, I mean.
You know, having to kill trees with paper or anything.
Yeah.
Just, and not just.
Just the reports we need.
Yeah.
Here's our address, here's our current standing.
We were kind of, we were kind of putting it off until, cause right now it's just, it's, it's manually very heavy. Um, just ending all of every, all the data and all that kind of stuff, because we only keep track of it on a spreadsheet. So anyway, I was kind of holding off to put it back in the monthly reports, cause it has been in the past until the software was ready to roll. So, um, maybe we could just put some of those in there, so we'd be able to keep, you know, put some in the new software.
I'll definitely check on them.
Especially some of the key ones that you shared, you know. Steve mentioned Mary and Norma, we've known those properties movement. And while we know progress has been made, of course, it, it's, everyone would love to see it, you know, quicker, you know, to actually see the results piece. Um, our couple of trail projects, eleven West Gilbert, so while things are moving, it's also been to them be able to show tangible movement rather than just, we're doing paperwork. So it's just easier.
How do you tell yard, yard ornaments from junk?
Yeah.
Well, you are, you are, it does say specifically in our code that you are allowed to put lawn ornaments, flowers, um. Now, it's not us, up to us to judge what people consider. That might be yours, but it might be someone else's treasure. So it's, it's not up to us to judge their taste in lawn ornaments.
What about like?
Huh?
What about like, um, camping, camping mats hung as garage doors?
And we've dealt with that, and then it comes back down and then it goes back up.
And like one whole side is fake vines.
Yeah.
And if you.
It's atrocious.
And if you peered inside there.
Yeah.
It's terrible.
Well, at least the junkyard that was in his backyard is kind of squashed, honey.
Well, it's new behind the house now. And you just can't see.
You just can't see it, okay?
Yeah, it's.
Would you take a note too for Steve or I, if I want to talk to him?
You can call him anytime.
Yeah, I don't need to bother, but, I mean, the junkyard over here is getting out of control. The vehicles are going down by and all the property owners clear it out in the back. It's way past the junkyard. I mean, I've had people beat me up by that, and I've talked to Steve a couple of times, and all I ever heard is they're in compliance. Well, how about Fran's street? I can't believe that's in compliance. Mary eight, we were, I'm not trying to get any venue here. We are on Mary, I heard too, just you that it's foreclosed and.
It's, it's forec, it's in the process.
In process, okay. So we, we stopped, we did do work there, but we stopped. Now we're just letting it go.
We have to. I'm not sticking any more money into that property.
If they ask.
We're not sticking any more money into that property, cause we won't, we may not get it back.
Okay, I'm just.
So we've already stuck.
Yeah, I know you've been down there, I'm, I'm sure.
Two or three thousand, so.
I'm just, and then, uh, I guess, I'll call Steve. There's several in my, a couple not in my ward and a few in my ward that I've talked to him about.
And I know, and I feel like I know, and I don't really believe this is the place. I think maybe just give him a call, because I can, I know the ones you're talking about right now, and some of them have actually come in and gotten obvious permits, and that's only a ninety day thing. So.
I wish you'd told me that, I would have brought it up.
What's a hot?
Well, I didn't.
No, I bet you we're talking about, but to Steve is how do we get that information?
Yeah, that's why we wanna have like a report, like. You know, I can't expect anyone to hear every time, but I mean, every, every two council meetings, maybe, right?
Cause we waste our time chasing stuff and maybe there's something going on.
Yeah, but he's a phone call wit, and he's really good about it. Or you can text him and just say, hey, give me an update on Frank, give me an update on our Peters, give me an update on Jones. You know what I'm saying?
Well, that's what I'm hoping to prevent, five phone calls.
Yeah.
Right.
That way, if he just produces.
Yes, exactly. Yeah.
We all got it.
And actually, on this next meeting, I will have him, for his reporting, I'll have him put something together and we'll help him get some, we'll get something together if we have to hold on to our.
I don't mean to overmoralize and, and go through the whole thing again, but even if it's just this address, letter sent, waiting two weeks, this address, litigation, this address, you know, knock or clap. Just a quick list of here's what I've been doing.
Perfect.
Would be great.
I forgot to mention that the purchasing policy that is at your, um, your location is tonight, has been amended and reviewed by our attorney. And I'll have it on the agenda, uh, for the next meeting. Uh, if you have any questions, uh, virtual changes or what have you, would you please contact me? I would love to take a motion to adjourn.
You got it. Number two?
All in favor?
Love it, I love it.
Opposed?
No.
Let's stay here a little bit. Brian, you say, what do you?